For 2012.
I just want to state that as each person addresses the board, please stand up and tell us your name and your street and what you live. I don't know everybody because it's in here tonight, so it'll help me familiarize yourself, and it's part of the rules of the meeting. So just to make sure everybody knows that. Dennis?
Hello, Dennis Felder, 24 Lake Street. I just had a couple of questions and some updates. I was in here today on October, I believe, asking a question about attorney fees. And I was concerned about the rising cost of them. I requested an update from the treasurer, and he graciously gave me one. So just, I really would like to know what's going on with our attorney fees. Because I asked her how much we spent attorney fees from April 1st to November 30th in 2010, 2011, and 2012. 2010, it was $5,985. 2011 was $6,127.70. In 2012, $23,340. At that rate, we're going to be spending over $40,000 in attorney fees for one year. That's on the way of in all the previous years that I'm aware of.
400% of everything.
Okay, Dennis, thank you for your question. We've got a lot going on. One of the things that people don't realize is the village code, village law, is 38 years old. There are things going on in the village right now. We need to fundamentally change their structure. You can't change village code unless you have attorney advisors. That's one aspect. The other one is that we're in impasse, negotiations. The other one is planning board, we've got a lot of properties here in the village that we're working on. We have a lot of things going on. I'm surprised it's that low, $25,000. That is true. But we have a lot going on, and in the end, the village will come out on top. We have to clear these issues. And we just can't make rules. We're not a dictatorship. We have to get advisors from the legal aspect through the state. So it's all going to come out all right.
And we're going to still, I can expect to get members higher and higher already.
I hope not. But you never know. I mean, this has been a while, right?
I have another question. I'd also like to know about the audits, the recent audits. I was a trustee last year, and we were audited by the state comptroller. And they went through all the books, and all the books were, we had a few things to address, and we addressed them. Now, what I'm hearing is we've spent almost $14,000 in two additional audits over those same books with the same results. I don't understand why we're spending all that money on unnecessary audits. $13,832.
Yeah, you're right, Dennis. They're answering you with the right information. And we have done something that nobody else in this village and any other board was interested in doing. They've known since 2005 that Pfizer was taken out of here, getting out of here. Probably 13, 14, whatever the thing is. Nobody has made one provision for it. So we took and got our ducks in line. You're going to know what, we know what's going on now. You're going to have to order, support, taxes raised, and everything to take up the slack for the people. So that's why I spent the money, had the audit done, so we know exactly where we're going right now.
What I don't understand, though, Mr. Mayor, is that the same books are being audited three different times.
Not true. Yeah, that's not true, Dennis.
Okay.
Are you saying, are you saying, are you hearing this or do you want me to handle this? Correct me if I'm confusing.
Well, I can read what I wrote to Dennis. "I put down three areas of financial operations: cash position, the fund balance position, and the budget to actual major operating funds were looked at. Cash position for the major operating funds as a percentage of 2012 expenditures. Of these funds, I exceed industry guidelines and reflect a strong position. The auditors caution that cash balances are not always the best measure of the fund's financial strength. Fund balance positions as of May 31st, 2012, all major operating funds are above industry guidelines and reflect a strong position. It was noted that the silver picture of the village is one of financial strength. The impending departure of the village's largest industry will have a major negative impact on all the funds of the village."
That's the rosy part, actually. It goes on to say that once Pfizer leaves, and they are leaving, people are kidding themselves, they are leaving. This is going to have a major impact on all funds in the village. The impact will be so great that in a very short time, all the village funds will be in dire financial straits. We could actually double and triple the water and sewer rates and raise the taxes, and we're not going to catch up to it. And I asked the question, who's going to pay for the school tax once they leave? They pay $445,000 in school tax. That question never came up. Where is that money going to come from? The mayor is absolutely right. Five or six years ago, people should have started cutting back and looking at this thing years ago. But now here we are, all of a sudden, bang, it's happening. Now what do we do? We're going to be lucky to survive this.
I'm joking.
Well, early 30, Woodhaven. And following up on Dennis', if we're in such dire straits, and we've already had an audit, which sure has given us the same information, why in the name of blazes did we have to go out and spend another $14,000 to find the same stuff out?
Because we couldn't find the baseline. We had no baseline. We could not find where the money was coming, where it was going. And our senator will tell you, he had a pretty good handle on it. He worked his butt off. But they showed him things that he didn't consider. It's not because he's lacking. He knows exactly what he's doing. He's good at his job. But the formula that they used, with Pfizer gone, was a real eye-opener. We're going to be, if we survive this, we're just going to be...
The information that the auditors used are the information I provided to them. That's the information they used, is the information I provided to them. Something they came up with is stuff that I came up with.
Yes, and I'll say that. You came up with Pfizer pays 18% of the assessed value of property revenue, 61% of water revenue, and 49% of the sewer revenue. Where is that going to come when they leave? Where does that come from?
Is it going to be all lost or not?
The legislature has already told us, and we had all those figures and provided them the facts. So if he provided those figures, it costs us $14,000 to figure out, but he already knew.
How do I answer that one?
I don't either. That's why I asked them.
You're going to answer that?
I'm not even sure that we had an audit, though. I don't even know why we had another audit. I mean, I was told at the last minute. I mean, you guys didn't give me any notice, so I mean, I don't know what you want me to say.
We started a new electrical thing up.
I will say that what these guys looked at was the 2012 year, whereas the other ones were prior to 2012.
If we didn't use all the surplus and savings that we had, how much would the village be in hold this year? Actually, how much was it last year? You used all the...
The audit report states that your cash balances and your fund balances all went up in your major operating funds except for the debt, except for the sewer fund. And the reason for that was because it was a one-time entry made to transfer money to a different fund because we have a reserve for debt service in the sewer fund. And that's the only reason why the fund down, or the cash went down in the sewer fund.
Has the village been running deficits the last couple of years?
No.
How come?
Because you don't spend everything that you are budgeting for.
But money was moved from the rainy day funds, or whatever you call it, the savings to balance the budget.
And you do that every year. That's how government...
So when those funds run out?
That's how governmental operations work.
When do those funds run out?
When you don't have any more.
You told me this year originally it was $68,000, and this would be the last year we'd be able to do it. Now we're actually more in a hole than $68,000 when we come out from the audit.
I don't even know what you're talking about. And that's what I'm concerned about, the attorney fees and these unnecessary audits. That's $50,000. That's a lot of money.
I seriously doubt whether this board truly understands that it's between the debt and money, it's always money they can pay.
It's going to come up. We're working on a plan right now. It'll come up.
Laura Baker, 24 Lake Street. I know we're talking about the budget, and there's been a rumor that with the budget cuts, that we're cutting off Sergeant Tommy Landry from the police force. I think a lot of people in here are really concerned about the one asset that Ross's Point does have. We'd like to know if the rumor's true, and why.
Absolutely not true. None of this is true.
So he's eager to keep his job till his retirement.
Absolutely.
Tommy can stay here all he wants. But he can take his retirement away. Not the governor, not the president. It still is.
Tommy can stay here as long as he wants. Let me explain what happened here. Last September, the village tried to expand and make more efficient police coverage. Tommy was part-time. We said, "Why is Tommy part-time? Why can't he be full-time?" He's got 33 years plus in. Tommy's an icon in this village. I grew up with Tommy. My father trained him. So we started looking into, "Why can't Tommy be full-time?" So we started this process to see if he could get grandfathered in. We found out that about 10 years of his records are missing. We can't find 10 years of his records in the village. So I asked Tommy, "Please go and talk to Elaine, go down to civil service and see if they got your records." In the meantime, we kept up this process to grandfather Tommy in into full-time. Well, it turned out that his position, according to the Civil Service Commission, was incorrectly applied in the Village of Ross's Point. In other words, he was working way more hours than he should have been, which we didn't have a problem with doing. We wanted him to go beyond that. So we actually, last November, or yeah, I think it was the end of October, passed a resolution to make him full-time. Well, Civil Service Commission can only do that till the end of the year. Well, right now, we're fighting back again some of the legal fees. And we are in negotiations with the Civil Service Commission to keep Tommy, to find some way to keep him full-time. All these rumors came off the internet. It's absolute nuts. When I saw some of this stuff on Facebook, I'm like, "My God." Just, you know, let me read some of this stuff. All this knee-jerk reaction is unbelievable. "They're trying to abolish his position." No, we are not. "We're trying to abolish his position so he can lose his benefits." No, we're not. "I'm thinking they're trying to find ways to save money." Yes, we're trying to find ways to save money, but not by throwing Tommy out on the street. It's the best thing that ever happened to Village of Ross's Point.
Exactly.
"Oh, the board all needs to go." They're all nuts. I think we should contact WPTC and WCX. I don't think they know our publicity. And definitely, they're making their stupid decisions. "Well, if you come into these meetings..."
Right.
"We wouldn't make stupid decisions." I've said over and over again, "Please come help us."
Every third Saturday of every month, I'm here from 11 to 1. I said that when I started. I do that. Nobody wants to be bothered.
Here's another one. "It seems like they have a list of people they want to get rid of." Come on, give me a break. My God. "A fairly common flow of poor decisions." Wake up, people. Watch CBTH. They did the same thing, cutting everyone as most of you are. Oh, my God. Then there's one that really went on to a rant, and this person took it off. Obviously, she was getting into the legal realm. There's more of this whole mess than Tommy. And he, oh, my God. Some of that stuff that I've read, it's just off the wall. These knee-jerk reactions are not helping. This is not helping. People are causing more problems for this village by doing this crap and not coming in here to help us. It's unbelievable. I was shocked.
Well, I think the rumor did help some. Obviously brought most of the town in here to listen to more.
Please go back next time. I need people to come and to help us work through our financial situation. But don't come in here because of an untrue knee-jerk reaction. It's all lies. Why would we hurt Tommy? My God, he's an icon. He just left my house. He was crying. He couldn't believe what was going on. He didn't want any of this. Unbelievable.
You didn't, no, you didn't help him.
This does not help.
On Facebook.
The derogatory attacks on Facebook, I mean, some of this stuff is just, it's very simplistic. It doesn't help anything. It's easy to do that than to face the hard choices that the village is up against. We really have to do something. When Pfizer leaves, we're going to be sitting here. What are you going to do about it? What are you going to do then? I'd love to see Facebook then.
Not spending.
Are they going to tear the building down?
We don't know. They won't.
We don't know.
They won't sell it.
They're going to send money out for the taxes, right?
They are very quiet about what they're doing.
We've got no clue if they're going to take the building down. If they're going to be lucky enough to sell it, or what, they don't let us name it.
Well, if they still with the tax base, still remain with it.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Anybody that thinks they're going to keep those buildings standing is...
We hope somebody comes in here.
Well, that was wrong. If you think they're going to keep those buildings standing, go look at Roosevelt Town at the GM plant. Go look in Cornwall at the paper land and see what's left.
Anybody reading the paper today all around us are clapping at it, are all clapping. What makes us so special? We're not doing anything to catch up to this. I'm sorry, I'm angry, but to me, it's an attack, how I would step into jumping and dumping Tommy out. I mean, my God, that police department is personal to me. My father worked there for 40 years. He trained Tommy. For this to come out, it's just unbelievable. I called the mayor. I just, I don't know what you people want.
I...
But Tommy is not going anywhere. Sorry.
I'm going to make a clarified statement. It is not our intention to hear it. It's Tommy's job. However, this board cannot guarantee what future boards may do. So Tommy's job is safe while we are here, but we cannot guarantee that for a lifetime, nor can we guarantee anybody's jobs in this room.
There are structural issues in village law that go back 38 years. And if the village doesn't change some of these procedures, we're going to go bankrupt. We cannot afford to pay something that was written 38 years ago. It did not, the law did not change with the times. When we started going through this, this is part of the legal, the bills here. We have to change with the times. We can't be living 38 years ago. It's not going to happen. I don't know how you're going to survive this.
A lot of other issues from what used to be back in the old days, when a person's handshake, and that was it. You were off, you were doing your job. Unfortunately, with just doing a little bit of researching myself here lately, it doesn't cut it in the state of New York anymore. You've got to have things in writing, and you've got to follow the legal procedures. And unfortunately, I just found that out today. This is what it is. You've got to follow the law.
I have one more question, please. I wondered that January 1st, where the Village of Ross's Point will not have a code enforcement officer. And I'd like to know, and I applaud trustee Reed for trying to revitalize the downtown. But what's going to happen on January 1st, when we don't have a code enforcement officer, and you've got all these renovations that you want to make? Or do you have one? Maybe you don't. I'm not aware of what the plan is.
We got one guy that's interested. Anybody else would like the job?
Now, is that person trained?
Is he civil service?
I'm sorry?
Send him down to Flatsburg to be trained. There's a session coming up here in the next week.
So they are trained? So we don't have to train somebody else, pay for somebody else's training, when we already have one already trained? So that position will be covered January 1st?
Hopefully, they'll have it all ready for January 1st.
Mr. Mayor, wasn't Mickey the code enforcement officer?
Yes, he was.
He was, was. Yeah, but I don't understand.
He was cut out of the budget last, when they did the budget last spring.
Because there was, there was a few on the board that were mad because he wasn't doing his job.
So they said, "Cut it out," and that's just the way it went. I'll tell you the truth. I wasn't one of them. That's what here and there.
But it's not money-related budget cuts or anything for code enforcement?
Uh-huh.
It's not money-related or budget cuts or anything of that sort.
That's the way it went. I don't know where else it's at.
I got another question.
We don't have the money to stay reinstated. We don't have it. So we're not there.
So is this person going to do it for free?
It's going to be about four hours a week, or five hours.
Another question. This is the man I was talking to about a month ago. Have you talked to any of the upper management at Pfizer?
Not yet.
And...
I get my ducks in order before I go there.
The quicker the better, because when you're a board and someone's behind every day, you tend to listen. And they're the ones that kind of put the Village of Ross's Point kind of in a bad hardship here. So why can't the village negotiate with them on taking care of some of the debt load?
I'm headed up there. I've been looking for my information through the water and the sewer. And I've got it, so I can make an appointment to try and see Dave. And when I do, I'm going to ask that they pay 49% of the water debt we got and 61% of the sewer. It works fine if they don't.
Well, if it doesn't work the first time around, like I said, if you're a board and someone's... If you're a board and someone's here, they're going to listen. You have to be persistent, okay? For you to step up and say, "Hey, come on, you've got to help the village here because all of us are going to be hurting. Why can't..." You look at this, back five, six years ago, that was brought up to our attention. And at that time, whoever was on the board did not pursue them at that time to have them take care of some of that debt. It just kind of went at the wayside, because everybody thought they're just going to stay.
They've been up there and talked to Pfizer and the board. George, whoever else was on the other board, like they went and talked to Pfizer.
But instead of letting it go, I mean, it's something that Mr. Mascale should be a part of that and be persistent.
May I ask you to...
Tim passes.
We met with them back in August, I think. They have a court. We go to every one of their meetings. But to call them up and ask them for a meeting, they're always busy. He's tried several times.
I'm going to go, I'll get in there one way.
The Village of Ross's Point should have a stake in what's going on over there. Your supply of water, your supply of electricity.
That's what I said.
Okay, so why can't you guys go there with the board and say, "This is what we need so we don't go in financial fault when you guys pull the plug or leave?"
It's, we have to make an appointment. But yes, he's called several times. We get no answers. We go to every one of their meetings and they set up.
Well, you've got to go somewhere else. You've got to.
I agree. I agree.
You've got to keep on going. You've got to keep doing it.
Oh, yeah.
You can't just look, I'm saying.
Don't think we're going to give up.
I think the thing is, I think what's happened is that, is that me looking in, and I own a business, okay, and I changed my routine back in 2005, '06, '07, '08, '09, '10, still changing to keep up with what's going on. It just so happens that the village at that time, it's too bad that they didn't change and they keep on, to keep moving, because things would have been a lot different.
We would not be in this predicament.
Right. But you guys are in a position now, and you're worried about we're all going to be hit with taxes, because I pay taxes in the Village of Ross's Point, okay? Whereas, I think if you go through Pfizer, like you said, these meetings and these meetings, you've got to be persistent. You've got to get in with the right guy. You've got to call corporate. You've got to say, "This is what's going to happen to us. Will you guys help? We need help."
We're never going to give up. Trust me. Try these calls quite a bit.
Maybe you don't think we are, but we are.
No, I didn't say that. I know you're going your best, but when it hurts your pocket, when it hurts your pocket, you're going to want more.
Oh, it's very difficult. They don't even answer questions to the counter. I mean, it's very difficult.
You go to a chamber, if you go down to a chamber meeting, and they'll have a representative there. At least last time you went down, they had one there. And I met the fellow. They don't talk about nothing. You can't get a word out of them.
If it wasn't for the chamber and Mr. Douglas, we'd be immersed. He's the one that pushes them to talk to us.
I'll probably end up having to have Gary help me out. Get in there and talk to him later on.
There you go. Maybe you should be a lot closer with Gary and say, "Gary, come on. Let's go. Let's move on." Let's get the, oh, a couple of the other Ross, Gary and the state senator, or is there...
Everyone's involved. Senator and their senator. About that? Call the office down here, Flatsburg, your senator, your representative, "Hey, what's going to happen to us?"
That would certainly be a help. We can get some help from you folks.
You're meeting the paper every day where good companies leave Little Town, and now they just left there. They have nothing.
Have you guys thought about which plan I'm doing for future, for the future, or any type of vision on what you want to do at the Village of Ross's Point? On to get out of this mess with Montreal 45 minutes away?
We're working very hard. Melissa, you want to jump in? Melissa's really working double time helping us out. Yes, we do. We've got a lot of things on the plate.
In 2011, we had some help from the technical assistance center in Flatsburg to do a full report on the effect of the closure on infrastructure on the water sewer electric. And this is something that I think that the mayor is going to be using when he does go talk to Pfizer. But I don't want to offer you a lot of hope that this, you know, I don't think you want to necessarily equate success with effort. A lot has gone on. There have been a lot of discussions. You can't measure the effort based upon the results in this case, because I would be thrilled if Pfizer lived up to the moral responsibility that Wyeth has for the construction of the sewer plant and the new water system. But we have no legal basis to go to them on. It is purely moral responsibility. And Pfizer is not Wyeth. Wyeth was cared about Ross's Point. Wyeth knew Ross's Point. When we went to Wyeth and we went to Robert Vincent in 2005, he promised that once the marketing was over, if it was not successful and the building was going to close, that he would work for us within the Wyeth system to secure some kind of aid. But he's gone, and Wyeth is gone, and is a different situation. So we, you know, this is, it documents certainly a clear moral responsibility. You know, the upgrades were made to serve Wyeth, and now Pfizer has bought them. But I can't make any promises, no matter whether Gary Douglas is involved or the state senator and assemblymen are involved. It will depend on Pfizer. And, you know, those of you who are in that plant know, it is a different operation than when it was at it. While some of the same people are there, they're reporting to an entirely different culture and management structure. And now in terms of what the village is doing, the village is, as we have been doing for years, we're looking at our assets, we're looking at opportunities. But the bottom line is that nothing that we are likely to do in the short term will change the impact on the water and sewer systems. What Wyeth is, and, you know, a spectacularly unusual consumer of water and sewer services. No one that we are likely to bring in here will use water and sewer to make up for the chunk of usage that they did, and that's, you know, that's why they're paying so much of the... So those, I, you know, I can offer you no real hope on that. In terms of the 18% of the assessed value, when we did the reassessment, it seems to me it was around $27 million was what we settled with Wyeth. There is no likelihood of commercial or industrial development over the next decade that will come close to replacing that in the Village of Ross's Point. That is just an unrealistic reality. And so, well, we'll do everything we can for downtown revitalization, looking at the available commercial industrial properties, trying to... looking at the available commercial industrial properties, trying to work with Pfizer to make sure that whatever is best for the village happens at that site. The impact in terms of the things you're talking about, on water and sewer and taxes, we're, we're not gonna stop that. We're not trying to, I mean, if we could nudge it, I would be happy. Because it's just, we're just not in an era of large-scale commercial and industrial growth. That's not happening anywhere in the United States. And I, I wouldn't be being honest with you if I said it was likely to happen.
Thank you. Sorry for giving you all the words.
There's one question I had, I believe was that you answered it, I just wanted to verify that you did it back. Is, my question was going to be, have we looked into any possible legal relief? And I, right here you say there is none available. It's already been...
We, we looked at our, uh, contracts and the, when the upgrades were made. And, uh, you know, twenty-twenty hindsight user agreements with such a major user would have been recommended. I believe it was beyond the imagination of the people involved at that time to think that Wyeth would leave. And, and so there were no user agreements that would allow you to claw back that money. So, and, and, you know, I'm not disclosing anything on camera that Pfizer, I mean, it's not there. And so if they assist us, it will be purely because of a moral responsibility to the village.
Mr. Mayor, whatever happened to the water and sewer that was being talked about from Ross's Point to Champlain that we thought would alleviate some pressure? Or does that, did that thing go on there?
No, they didn't get the grant. Ask, make an email is better.
Didn't get the grant. Nobody applied for it, did they?
Uh, not they applied for it.
Waiting for an answer from the Village of Ross's Point, whether you're gonna be part of the grant or not.
What has ever said, not done it?
You don't say me, do you?
So did that alleviate some pressure?
No.
No.
They're not a customer. The project is a shared water and services project that would put us on well water. We would not be selling water into Champlain. We'd be pulling well water out and using shared services between the three with a shared water plant and new infrastructure in the town, in the Village of Champlain and using our existing water structure and putting in, uh, I believe another tower. So it's not gonna alleviate any burden on us. Um, there will be some additional feed on top of that if we go in. It's not expensive, but there is some.
We didn't throw it out. We signed a memorandum of understanding to keep the project going. We're waiting for, we haven't heard anything. We signed the paper, sent it out, and we agreed with whatever they wanted to do. Let the process go forward. Never anything.
The last grant funding application that came back, we didn't reach enough points. They had to have a hundred and fifty points, I believe we saw somewhere in the nineties, for points to qualify for grant funding. So they were relooking at trying to get us more points to qualify for the project.
Got Matt, Matt, uh, his co-founder, he got Matt Cooper to send it. He, he wrote all of it if he had to. There's no money now, you know that, because every bit of the money that the states got extra went to New York City and Long Island and those places after that.
I don't think it's dead in the water. It's probably...
It's not about me dead in the water, no.
Probably just delayed.
I mean, well, it's gonna be delayed, but you know that. They're giving away, taking every dime for the cities.
Quick question. Todd Laundrie, I'm the other brother.
Yep.
The thing that kind of throws me off is you drive around Ross's Point today and you see all the for-sale signs. Okay, we got people on fixed income. You're looking at, you know, we're gonna raise taxes. Estimate, what's it gonna be that is gonna be raised? And how's that gonna affect the people on a, on a fixed income? I mean, is Ross's Point gonna be like Champlain, kind of years ago with Harris Graphics? When, you know, they had a downtown and now they're not much of anything? And a beautification plan is fine, but if they aren't getting people here, how's that working? I mean, you know, we need an income. We need money. But there's a bad thing about us. We got a lake and we can't use it. Or we're not. I liked a beach plan years ago. That would have been perfect. Something big like, uh, Platsburg. People cross the bridge coming over. But, you know, where'd all that stuff go?
Part of the revitalization project is looking at us partnering with other areas to try to get tourism into the area. We are like, pulled it out more than what it is. Um, we're also going to be looking at the turnover of housing within this area. And if it truly is an issue or people are just putting fines out and just kind of riding the waves. If it sells, it sells. If not, they're staying. Um, we don't know what that housing effect is right now. Property is selling in Ross's Point. It's not just going up and people leaving. So, um, that is part of that revitalization committee.
Yeah, our, our, where are those people coming from? Were they working?
Still haven't figured where they're working. They're coming in their mind. Probably Customs or Border Patrol or whatever. I don't know. Where they're coming from, where they're buying.
So basically, uh, Ross's Point, see, they've got to be Customs, Border Patrol, CEO. I mean, I worked for CBPH. And I know you were talking earlier about, you know, getting rid of those people on higher up, but they did. Sorry.
We weren't talking about that. There's something on Facebook saying, "Oh, they're..."
They, they did give it to people from CBPH.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, I mean, they're having hard times right now, too. And, uh, I kind of wonder where I'm gonna be, so.
The people that we have in our higher-up position, is they're doing a lot for by saving money, by cutting budgets, like the Brian Pelkey and Mike O'Brien and Brian Gellmo acting at the water plant. They're doing everything they can to help slash costs.
That's right.
They're doing a great job. Even Chief Junior Moore, doing everything they can to help slash costs and save us some money.
You're working very hard.
Just doing the job. And I understand that. And thank you guys for doing it. But we gotta look at, this is the way it's gonna be in another year or so. A lot worse often than it is right now. And I understand, I truly understand what you're saying. And I'm sorry, five or six years ago, someone didn't have the common sense to say, "You know, this is what's gonna happen." But my question was about seven years ago, or maybe eight, I said, "What happens if Wyeth ever moved out?" I was told it never would. I worked with four different airlines, going through Chapter Eleven, Chapter Eleven, and again, you know. I heard CEOs say, "That never happened to us." As I went from one airline to another, so, S. To have mindset that this is never gonna happen. Like you said, changes.
They used to work in a railroad. Oh, they were gonna leave. Guess what? They left.
I know it was gonna get higher before I got fired.
I'm doing a good job on their bills. This thing used to be about that thing, six months ago. Damn thing would be that. Hey, you gotta cook two, three pages. We got a job. We got...
We got some of the best employees everywhere.
A lot of stuff that was on their, on these, like their computers and stuff. We cut, uh, belly cut out a lot of stuff that wasn't being used. We're paying thirty, forty bucks a month here, forty bucks, bucks a month there. We've gone away with a ton of it. Yes, we spent some money on the lawyers, but that's the way it's gone. I would love not to spend a dime, if you want to know the truth. But we had to know where we're gonna stand and where we're going. So they, we, sixty for one, for the village, sixty-one percent of its sewer and water up at Pfizer. We'll, we'll meet with them again. We'll go down, we're gonna go down to, to Chambers next week. I'm gonna talk, see if we can get some help, find something else. Well, when they did this years ago, where the water tower went Wyeth, there was never anything done in writing. As to say, "You, you walk away from us, they're gonna pay that." Nothing done. So everybody just ran. Of course, well, it was a good thing to, to help Wyeth as much as they could do. So, I know what I say.
And I'm gonna say it again, like I said at several board meetings, "We need your help. Please come in here and help us." It's gonna come down to what services you want, what services we're gonna have. We're going to have to cut services. It's up to you. It's your village.
When Pfizer took over from Wyeth, they were more or less grandfathered in to this fiasco that you're in now. They have no security based on what you were saying. It's only a moral issue pertaining to them. There's no recourse, uh, from the town.
Not, not that we've been able to spot in town.
But you guaranteed them all of the water that Wyeth previously used when they took over. Did I say that?
I'm not...
Wyeth used a considerable amount of water, which is saved, right? And, and that applies to Pfizer as well. They came in under that premise, utilizing whatever Wyeth had previous. And there's no recourse from the town to support that sixty-one percent that they used.
Correct. And they didn't buy a live plant. They bought a dying plant, a plant that was already slated for closure. So we couldn't go back and say, "You're, okay, now you're coming in here and we have all this new water that's supposed to be helping you out." We could refund another contract because they bought a plant that was already slated for closure. So it wasn't something that we could have done at that point either.
But there was a sixty-one percent noted factor there, right?
Yeah, we just...
And they agreed on that. That's evidently in the contract, if they grandfathered in.
It's like any person that comes in and buys a house in Ross's Point, they're guaranteed water. They're, we're not telling them, "You have to buy so much and pay so much if you use less." Here in Ross's Point with the flat fee, but at the same, they bought the plant and they get to use the water.
They bought it as is. At that point, it was sixty-one percent, whether they used it or not.
That's the issue, whether they're using it or not, that was...
They bought, they bought as is. They continued that.
And that's part of the contract as well.
I, I think that there may be a misconception that there is an agreement that guarantees them a certain amount of water. I, I'm not aware of that. That, that is just what they have traditionally, historically used in the village.
And you were able to furnish that for years.
Yes.
And evidently, evidently Pfizer needed that to be operative, and so.
We'll see if we can hold them to that.
Yeah, but they haven't needed sixty-one percent.
Well, good for them.
They've been, because they've been declining. They've been paying for that.
That's a plus for the town.
They bought as is.
You know, there's two ways to look at things. Is the grass half-full or half-empty?
I can't think there's a major misconception here. I think there's a misconception that they're paying for sixty-one percent of the water. No, they're not. They're paying for what they use. So they're losing less and less and less. They're paying less and less and less. There is no contract that says they will pay the equivalent of sixty-one percent. There never was.
Karen Ryan, uh, Washington, asks, uh, obviously, when you have tough, tight times, you have to look at cutting the tariffs. We're a great village. And most of the people who live here, you know, lived here for a really long time, appreciate the fact that we have great infrastructure. We have great village services. What are we at risk of losing?
Well, they might, if you wanna be, uh, picking up brush and leaves and stuff like that. Because you brought the two men out all day long, every Friday, from May till November. Well, we just quit last week.
I've been picking up leaves and stuff. We've been there for years without ever having that benefit. That's something that we've had recently. But are, are we looking at more than that? Are we looking...
Been there a long time. We're gonna, tell them you have to pick up garbage for the people years ago. But we're gonna have to prioritize. Really hard, gonna have to think about what services do we absolutely need. We're gonna have to prioritize. And little things like that, uh, if we think we can get away with it, maybe once every six months, or maybe people can deliver their brush, whatever it takes to save, so we're gonna have to look at it so that we don't have to do more draft...
We got the best fire department, the best EMS. I'll tell you right now.
If it came down to cutting the civic center or the library or anything large like that, it's gonna go out to public vote. It's gonna be the, the people that have to decide what gets cut if we don't have the money to run. It won't be the board just arbitrarily cutting something.
We're just not gonna arbitrarily shut things down.
And it's not in the best interest to shut services down if you wanna get people to come into this town. So that's not currently what we're looking at.
You know, I, I helped from a few people because we, uh, because we signed up for, uh, a bike path from Chapman Street to the golf course. Well, if anybody looks into the future at all and sees we have all the people that ride through on bicycles, that'll help out and generate things. Very, hoping very much so. And Champlain Town is decided to go from there to, to the school, and then into Champlain. It might sound stupid, but it's all these little things that we need to help out, try and get something going. You know, and don't be a fan of it, but it's, it, everything don't have to be major. It's nice if we have somebody to buy out Pfizer. That would be, that gets me out, but it's not gonna happen.
I'll just, I'll try to keep this one short. Um, we talked about bike paths, and I was, I was thinking that as I was driving down, uh, town tonight. You go along the lakeshore, every once in a while, there's a piece of vacant property that's for sale along that lakeshore, right along the current bike path. And I know it's a nice venture, but I often wondered if it wouldn't be in the village's best interest to look into acquiring new properties.
Poppy Little, Tyler Street, I think one of the greatest assets that we've had recently has been, um, Joe Tredwell, who bought Gaines Arena and really built it up to the point where he's brought up a lot of people coming into Ross's Point. And it's really sad to have some places like the Anchorage that is gonna be pulled in an eyesore for how long. And somebody needs to be done with that. The guy needs to... Get off the pot, what's gonna be employed. Needs to, he, he needs to do something. I mean, there's always someone who needs a big hole there with a fence around it. Get someone else to, to buy it or, or make him do something, you know, build up another restaurant. That would, that would help. And then the other guy up on the mountain mark, I don't know if they're related, but, you know, these, these fires that come out of nowhere, we may really kind of wonder.
We have, we have a lot of areas in the fire that we see a farmer's market up here in the summertime. I'd love to see more advanced here in the summertime, instead of seeing an empty park or lot. Uh, maybe Joe Tredwell can bring in some Fino Aurora Derby in here in July. I don't know.
Anything that we're, we're, we're looking at everything. We need ideas. We need anything.
Here's a question. How about UFC fighting match up in, down in here?
About what?
You know, like, uh, ultimate fighting.
Sure. I talked to a fellow in Vermont that'd love to have, uh, broom ball over here in the summertime. Broom, are they, the broom skates and the broom ball and all that stuff? I mean, we'll see if we can work it out, get this thing pumped up. You're down.
Why don't we do more of the ball fields? I mean, you could have tournaments starting up.
It's very difficult. It's very difficult.
We invite any volunteers from the public that wants to come and try to bring anything into this community to...
Please help.
Form a club and do it, bring it in.
Please help.
Five people can't do everything. Um, but, you know, we have a revitalization committee. We have great turnout for that. All it takes is optimism, attitude to get it done. So if anybody would like to form a committee to look at uses for the rec center and get more people in here, we would love to have that happen.
We have a Fourth of July committee, too.
We have a Fourth of July committee. We're getting more people interested in that. We can't possibly put on a Fourth of July with no people to help us do it. So...
Maybe if we get the people to come around this town.
Maybe they will and just stand up and take that little run.
We got rid of your best promoter last, last budget, giving, for twenty-three hundred dollars a year. We got rid of your best village promoter, Jerry, Jerry Fabro, for twenty-three hundred dollars. Big mistake, in my opinion.
Seven man worked at Wood Street. I just had a question back on Pfizer, what Mr. Manon brought up. Do you guys have a, a number of mine, I mean, that shape, where it's made, and they pull up safety, why do you need that? Where are those things you have with? Actuate base.
Our son's been working on some. We really don't have final numbers yet.
I don't wanna strike fear, but trying to test the case for it.
We don't have final numbers yet. We're working on something. Our son's got a good handle on it. It just, it takes time to stir all this stuff up.
Put out the wrong number.
Yeah.
You gotta have a meaning like that.
Right. This is, this is perfect. Don't feel... This is perfect, don't feel, really offending us. I went over to the road camping and I asked for people to give me an input, or bitch at me, whatever you please to do, but I would like some help. I asked for help, came over the door, and I, as of tonight, this is, this is the way it should be every Monday.
I agree.
Can you tell approximately how many lots are in Ross's Point?
How many lots?
How many lots, homes with, on lots? How much taxes we're getting from each, I mean, if we got 140 lots and our, you know, rate is gonna cost us $410,000 or even more, and then you're breaking it down and saying, "Okay, you people are gonna pay $8,000 a year in taxes," and I can't imagine anybody hanging out there.
Are you saying, I think there's 941...
Yeah, something like that.
Houses, family houses that pay taxes?
Parcels.
Parcels.
That's, that's...
Not counting commercial.
That is, no, that's including office.
That is including, 941.
Because, I mean, you're looking at that, you're collecting money from those lots, and when you look at your overhead at the end of the day and say, "My God, how do I reach that?"
Anybody that reads the paper, you can see that when you get hit with something like this, immediately to take up the slack, they raise the fees and they raise the taxes. Well, after a while, people can't afford, so they move out. So now you go from 941 to 935, so you have to raise the taxes again, and more people leave. Now you're down to 900. It's a continuing mess, so you have to start ahead of time to cut this off, otherwise it's a never-ending drainmaker.
Like the taxes and stuff, water and sewer and stuff, sure started going up.
You know, I guess one thing we're about to, you know, hey, I heard about my brother losing his job, but also worry about the people on fixed income. How do we pay for this? It's, at the end of the day...
Well, I don't know what to tell you, and I truly feel sorry for the ones that are on the fixed income, some of them don't make, get very darn little, but I don't know what to say either. Or are we gonna fold?
I'm just, I think that this is a good discussion, it's something that I've been encouraging the board to go public with as soon as possible, and I don't, I'm just gonna do some very rough math in terms of the way I look at it. It seems to me that when our son and I analyzed this in 2005, Wyatt made up about 25% of the village's tax base. Now it's down to 18%, so it has been cut back. I mean, that is lower, there was an assessment done. So let's say, worst case, the assessed value of Wyatt disappears. It's gone, they plow it under, then there's land that has done, but so let's say, okay, so worst case, no spending cuts, no adjustments by the board, you'd be looking at a 20% tax increase. Now, my village taxes, I think, and I'm not positive, but I wanna say they're probably about $600 a year, and I think I'm on, probably on rather the high end in terms of my property taxes because of where I live. So if I have a 20% tax increase on my $600, that's $120 a year.
And what about the school tax, the county tax?
Okay, but the school tax is under 6, it was 6% years ago, so it's even smaller than that now. Now that'll be bigger dollars, Ted, because of course it's a much, much higher rate. But in terms of what Ross's Point has to bear itself, I mean, for a higher-end house, I would be expecting, if there were no cuts, maybe $10 a month, or if nothing changed. So that's not good, and I know there are people that $120 a year is, in total, that is a problem, that if you are, if you are living check to check, that is a problem, but it's not $1,000 a year. So I think we want to be sure we keep that in mind. Luckily, our tax rate, and if you compare us to our neighbors, we'll still be cheaper in terms of property taxes.
My understanding was Wyatt also paying money for our school taxes?
Yeah, that's what I think. So Wyatt at that time, now I'm going back...
That's gonna fall back on...
Yeah. Wyatt, when we did the analysis, and I was thinking, I'm doing this off the top of my head, but it seems to me Wyatt made up 6% of Northeastern's total assessed value in 2005.
Which was how many lots?
So, so, so 6%. So if they had left in 2005 and the school had not changed its spending, you would've seen a 6%, they would pack on a 6% school tax increase to everybody. My bet is that that number's come down to over the past eight years, so that they're not 6% of the school tax anymore, maybe more like 4% or less. And so if they went, and again, there was no adjustment by the school, you might see a 4% tax increase in your school taxes attributed to Wyatt.
So how much does Wyatt put into, for school taxes? Like ours, it's more than $600. So I can't imagine that 4% really fitting in around, hey, fitting the juice.
I'm trying to think, I wish I could think of my school taxes off the top of my head.
There's a school board meeting tomorrow night.
You get to the school district and you get the...
I'd like all of you to know.
So, so again, it would be, I'm trying to think, my school taxes, probably, would be like $4,000?
Yeah.
So a 4%, so it would be what, about $160 for the year for school taxes, is what we'd be talking. So again, another 15 a month. So the reason I'm doing this, again, is not to minimize that, because I know there are people that that will be very hard for in this village, but it's not thousands of dollars, not what we're talking about. And that's, there are economies, I mean, when you don't provide all those services, then you can save some money some places, too, and you can, you know, you can, the board will have some time to cut back. But just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me just jump in.
It's not so much the number of lots, it's the assessed valuation. It's a much bigger impact on the village, because our total assessed valuation is relatively low, and they are a very large percentage of it. 17, 18%, that's a fairly good-sized chunk. When you go out and look at the school district, they're much smaller, because you've got a huge assessed valuation, includes all the town of Champlain, well, almost all the town of Champlain, all the town of Moore, part of the town of Altoona, it's, it's all figured in. So your total assessed valuation is quite high, they are a much smaller player here. You go to the town and county tax, they're even less of a player. So yes, our individual taxes as county taxpayers might go up a little, almost infinitesimal, I guess. School district, they might go up a little bit, but so is everybody else living in the Northeastern school district. So in reality, that may not be that much of a chunk. Like here in the village, yes, for your assessed valuation, if it goes up, you know, worst-case scenario, 17, 18%, depending upon what your assessed valuation is, it could be, it could hurt.
Brian Smith, Chapman Street. I just had a question about power lines that are still up above, up on Chapman Street and Patch Street are only two streets to us.
What it is, we've been waiting, Patch Street's gonna be next, next spring. Telephone Company has been having a little trouble, so they're gonna get with us this spring and we're gonna start working again. They gotta take the old poles out of the way before we can do anything.
Well, you first got to put your lines in before they can get the poles out, so...
That's right, that's right. That's what's gonna happen. If they, if they don't have the money to, I shouldn't say it, right, they'll hold it down for money. But their lines have to go through, we're gonna go ahead and start ours. They're all going together, they gotta be able to do their work. We can't, right, but that's, you know, so it's, that's why there's been holes on. So if we're all trying to work together on that hard deck, too, we can get it, get it all finished. I'd love to see everything on the ground. We don't have no more words. Transformer once a while bowls, well, that happens, nothing you can do about it. The game plan for next spring is, Brian's got it set up for April, I believe, start again on Patch Street, if it works out with the telephone company. All right. Anyone else? Did anybody else wanna move on to the meeting? Okay, I got a special meeting on November 7th of 2012, which is a short meeting, about two minutes, and then the regular meeting on November 19th. Make a motion to accept...
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the special meeting on November 7th and the regular meeting on November 19th, 2012. Second.
Any discussions? Any questions? Any who's signed by?
Aye.
I'm gonna go up in the bills. Make a motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills?
We have one addition.
Pay additions?
We have one addition. Bill Jabut, it's the second payment request on the V and H, it's $24,332.31, that's for electrical work.
That's paid by the grant.
Make a motion to pay the bills as amended for the week of December 3rd. Second.
All who's signed by?
Aye.
State mayor votes right. Correspondence, letter from Connie Cassabaugh, landscape painting classes at Dodge Memorial Library, you wanna read that?
During September and October, I taught landscape painting class at Dodge Memorial Library. This was a fine art course with attention given to the basic principles of art and the mechanics behind the composition of a painting. The funding for the course was provided primarily by a grant from Lifetime Learning with the objective of teaching art to seniors as well as encouraging them to me and interact with other members of the community. The participants learned how to produce matte frame and paint, painting, an art show and reception co-made. The event, with each student selecting and handing their work, approximately 50 people attended this reception. None of this would have happened without the assistance from Donna Berner. She provided invaluable help in preparing the grant, the development of a PowerPoint presentation, and numerous details that are, something. To this type of event, she provided homemade papers and coffee. She was instrumental in handling details. And this event was a resounding success. Many of the participants have continued to paint and continue to explore pastel as a painting medium. I want to personally thank you for your support, Donna Berner, and the Dodge Memorial Library, and encourage you to help promote programs like this that provides professional instruction as well unite and energize the community. That's from Connie Cassabaugh.
You wanna read the letter from Kristen?
I will.
Kristen Don.
The next letter is from Kristen Don to Grand Prix. For Stewart Street on Wednesday, November 7th, 2012, a potentially serious electrical issue occurred at our residence while an independent contractor, working on behalf of the electric cable company, was installing a cable rail across and beyond our property. Upon notification of the incident, the village employees responded immediately. In our view, the village electric department employees mitigated any resultant potential or personal injury and prevented any damage to our home. We would like to thank the dedicated employees of the village electric department for the efficient and professional steps they undertook to quickly restore the integrity of our electrical system and return power to our residents. Further, we would like to express our sincerest appreciation to you, Mayor Baker, for visiting the scene personally. And we feel very fortunate to live in the village as a spring, and again, thank you, Mayor Baker, and every employee who lent their assistance to us on November 7th. And the next item I have is, received a notification from Steve Pinto. It is with deep regret that I must resign from the zoning board of appeals. I will be starting a new job next week and will not be available for meetings. I have to commute a 1.5 hours. And that's from Steve, so if you'll go on that.
Yeah, we're looking, now we're looking for anybody who wishes to be on the zoning board, fill his spot. I'd like to take anybody that's interested.
Actually, looking for two, a permanent position and a alternate.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to...
Do you? Do you?
Great, Mr. Trevrell volunteered to be on the...
Yeah, Joe volunteered. Perfect, thank you, Joe.
You'll have to appoint him there, but before you do that, I need you to get a motion to accept the resignation.
Make a motion to accept Joe Trevrell.
No, make a motion to accept the resignation of Steve Pinto, from the zoning board.
Right. Second. All who's signed by?
Aye.
Right.
Now you need to make an appointment, if you'd like to appoint Mr. Trevrell.
I appoint Joe Trevrell to the zoning board.
Make a motion to appoint Joe Trevrell into the zoning board.
Second. All who's signed by?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Trevrell.
Thank you, Joe.
You still have a meeting? Yes, I'll...
Excellent.
Make a motion for that, too.
Are you sure there's not that patch from going in there?
Make a motion to appoint Joseph Burket as an alternate zoning board member.
Who seconded that?
Apparently, the county didn't expect that to happen, did they?
No. Yes, I'm happy, you see this?
All right. Motion. Sorry, I didn't... Thank you, that's all I have. So you have reports of the mayor and the trustees. Mayor, friends of the North County, five-year multi-jurisdictional pre-disaster hazard plan for FEMA and guideline training. I gotta go to that. What was that, Carol, what was that?
It's January 4th, and there's two different times that you can attend, either at 10:00 a.m. at the Clinton County Emergency Services Building, or at 1:30 p.m. at the Altoona Town Hall. They're gonna be holding two meetings that day, it's like a kickoff meeting.
More than one person, can you go?
Yeah, I think that Brian should attend with you. So if you wanna get a motion?
Yeah, I got a motion on that one.
Make a motion to have the mayor send the five-year multi-jurisdictional pre-disaster hazardous mitigation plan, FEMA guideline training, with Brian Kelly.
Second.
Any discussions? Any discussions, all who's inside about it?
Aye.
All right, that's all I have. Trustee Martin.
Let your request in executive session to discuss water personnel? Make a motion?
Second. Who called who?
Aye.
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 Also have an announcement that winter parking ban is in effect, that is from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Don't be under that rule. Also an announcement of the memorial tree, that is hosted, I think, by Tim McGoldrick, and that will be December 21st, held by the tree at the village office at 7:00 p.m.
Now, what exactly is that?
Who is the name of that, please?
December 21st.
Thank you.
Um, they usually make a memorial, some kind of snowflake or something, and they have the person's picture on there, and for a person who went past.
Oh, that's by donation, right?
This is...
That is also a discussion of the Anchorage company. We got it up my board, we got that letter from Mike Phillips. Did we ever get an answer? Did we ever get an answer?
Do we have any legal records to make and fill in that hole? Do any of our zoning and planning would say that we can do that?
No. The letter we got from Attorney Phillips, it went to, did we get an answer from Tom Lee?
No, I don't believe so.
No.
I mean, we can extend it, you had spoke about extending it to June, and then Mike, where's Mike? Someone was there?
He has had extensions already.
So right now, you either have to, you can extend it or deny it, and just, whatever you...
He has had extensions already.
Yeah, I know that.
Our issue is this.
I think it should be, I think something should be done, because we're trying to revitalize our community, that is an eye sore.
Yes, it is, very much so.
In order to make and fill it in, we will need to revise our planning or zoning board in order to do that first. So it's going to take some time to do it, so unfortunately, we're still going to have the hole there available for people to buy. It is worth more money with the basement for somebody to come in and reuse that if it's still able to be filled in and repaired. Otherwise, if it needs to be torn down, when you go in and you can prove that it's an unsafe basement... unsafe basement, something's not got, then, um, it's just gonna take time. There's nothing that we can do today to make it better than what it is.
He is just trying to sell the front part.
Correct.
Now, anyone in their right mind would not buy that, with that hotel behind them.
I can't say that.
You can never tell the minds of the buyers.
I doubt that you'll ever have it. I think it's real.
I, people can dream, um, you know, and he's never said that he's not open to selling the hotel. It's just currently not up for sale. If somebody approaches him, he may be willing to sell that property.
Well, past, uh, past experiences with this man have shown otherwise.
Uh, if you guys wanna go ahead and change the zoning in the D's to get it guys, what's the stuff that, what came off from affecting other people and damage?
What we make on those planning and zoning changes can't be to affect one person. It has to be village-wide, so...
That's what I'm saying. If you're going after him for that building right there, when you change that, it causes everybody in damage. If you only affect him, it'll affect everybody.
It's like, it's like, I'm sorry, bud. Here, we'll check you on that. Here, you're required.
George Walker, Marinale House. Uh, I would suggest we ask another attorney, someone on land use. Um, it's an attractive nuisance. As such, for our health, the authority wouldn't close it down, require it to be filled at his expense. Um, the board doesn't have to pass any of the laws with anything else under the general laws currently. Uh, I think the board's been very kind in Marinale, which is the better part of six years. And, uh...
We still have to wait for a response though, from our last inquiry.
I'm sorry?
We still have to wait for a response on our last inquiry with the attorney. We're still waiting for that.
From whose attorney, our attorney?
Our attorney.
No, it's been, did we talk to our attorney tonight?
Been over, a little over a month. We'll call him tomorrow.
I'll call him right now.
There's more fees. A lot of things, a lot of things in the pipeline.
Yeah, that's a big, uh, understands. There's not so much to do, and everything costs money. Resolution costs money.
Make a motion to move the discussion of the acreage property until the next meeting so we can hear back from our attorney.
Second. Any discussion? Any who's signed by?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything that holds this gentleman accountable for the conditions in his establishment? Um, I'm just, I mean, I'm, I'll give you a couple of first, I'll give you a recent one. There was a truck driver that came in, and he had two passengers, and, like an idiot, this guy's looking for somewhere to stay. It's not the first time I've been involved in this, okay? And the directions told him where to go. Within forty-five minutes of me being tangled up talking with local people in that store, he comes back and he says, "There's no goddamn heat. I'm going to Plasburg. The hell with this. Thanks a lot, ladies. I've had relatives in this place." So, I mean, he's trying to make money for the village and trying to look at prospects. He's trying to keep it lit. The only thing that we're hoping is that that breakfast picks up your pretty darn quick. He goes, "Where are these people supposed to stay?" That place is terrible. He come in in Plasburg people, that school, that apartment building down, and Plasburg, they're all up here. Nobody knows better than Tom Lee on there. You're a handful.
You are, um...
You know, it's like, if this guy has accountable for anything, how do you do it?
I don't know how we get the inside inspections done. Uh, that'd be something that happens if you find out.
My sisters came up with children, and they ended up all coming back to the house, sleeping on whatever.
There are things being done. Yes, the government, of course, the bureaucracy works very slowly. Um, we've made some inquiries, uh, I don't think the last, I think the last time I heard was back here in, uh, August through September, but things are being done, but it just, they got it pretty well cleaned out of all of that people for the minute. And I believe hearing the man has helped us out very much, so, and I'd like to thank him. Still got a few more going. Still got a bubble. For working, but, for working.
Yes, Mr. Grant has really helped us quite a bit, actually. But we're never gonna give up. And I can tell you, I swear to you today, we will never give up unless you call me out.
Please, 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 continue to come to me.
Yes, we need your help.
Don't, uh, stay away.
See, all these things, all these things help, as you say, we break this down, we kill Plasburg, and it just, it all, final sum, and if somebody will say, "Hey, we have evidence of what's going on here." So we need your input. It's very, it's very vital.
Like I say out here, the inside of here, I'm, I'm, if somebody wants to come give in, vote, swear at me, whatever, feel free to do that. I'm scared, but it's no blainer than that.
Who's bringing Tommy's name up? You could get a crowd. Why it got all started in the first place? You give that face, the face going up again?
Uh, no, just got a couple of words. We just wanna remind the board that on the 17th of this month, I will be at EMS class. And also, um, just, uh, one quick thing here, uh, in the last, uh, a week and a half or so ago, um, there was a little bit of a tragedy that happened with a champlain ambulance. And I would like to take a moment to ask everybody here in the audience to probably please stand and have a moment of silence for Mayor Monti. At any point in time, um, our brother, the mayor, the EMS, if we hear at any point of our location for neutral aids. Thank you. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Good, ask him. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the only thing I have is, um, I would like to make a motion to authorize patrol and baser to attend train in Plasburg. Uh, that's the track, track ten conversion. That's a upgrade to the, uh, system that collects all the data, traffic accidents, incidents, stuff, to share it with, uh, state, county, federal resources. It's actually a fantastic system. So I'd like him to go to that.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion, all the who's signed by?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Mayor, I'm sure these good people have sure had enough of me tonight, so that would be good. Thank you very much. Trustee, read.
I'd like to make a motion to request an executive session to discuss a contract negotiation. Second.
Any who's signed by?
Vote, vote.
Aye.
Read, try it.
Aye.
Aye.
And my second thing on the agenda is to request an executive session to discuss the possible litigation. Would I put that in form of a motion? Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other aboard?
Uh, just like to thank everybody who helped make this year's parade of toys. I know it was a successful event. We had about seventy children that attended this year. The weather was a little chilly, so I think that deterred them away, but it was a great night. So, thank you.
I don't have anything. All right? Fine. All right. What we have here?
I would like to, uh, people, can I let you hear? Oh, I'm sure. Mayor Baker, I'd like to have a couple items from the fire department, specifically the EMS. Um, Junior Moore was here earlier. I know he had wanted to say something, but, uh, he had to leave. Uh, I don't know if I'll go as far as what he wanted to say, but I will say that we are in dire straits for advanced life support EMS. We need, we need additional people who are willing to join and willing to be trained to be advanced life support techs. Right now, we have immediately available in the village at any given time, no more than two. And probably, at least sixty percent of our calls are really advanced life support. Unfortunately, about eighty percent of the calls come over the page as being something that would require advanced life support. Uh, so we are in pretty sorry shape. For example, 2011, uh, we had two hundred and thirty-two calls. Of those, I answered a hundred and seventy-one, Junior answered a hundred and twenty-four. So far this year, as of 11/12, we're already at the two hundred and thirty-seven. We're already five more than last year. And our numbers are, I'm at a hundred and sixty-four, Junior's at a hundred and thirty-five. With his full-time job, he's getting burned out. Unfortunately, answering calls at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, I'm getting a little bit there, too. And the unfortunate thing is, we have a bunch of people that even though they may have had the symptoms for four days, or had the symptoms at 2:00 in the afternoon, they wake up at 2:00 in the morning. Uh, that's not cutting, uh, I'm sorry to say. So we really need some people to step up to the plate. That being said, that that doesn't happen, we might be looking at other considerations which may in fact end up costing the village a bit more money. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is, and this is indirectly related, but reinforced because of the unfortunate events of last, of last week, we run an ALS service, an advanced life support service, which means that basically we carry all of the drugs they have in the emergency room. There may be a few that we don't, and we administer them accordingly. There are many cases where we can actually come very, very close to mitigating the, uh, critical circumstances before we even leave the house. And you're going to see that more and more. So I, I know that people back, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, maybe even more recent, were used to the fact that a, that an EMS service kind of flew and go, you know, throw and go, you know, take off, hell, vent the weather, lights and sirens. I think that most of this, the population of the village will see that very frequently we respond to the scene with our lights and sirens just because we don't know what's there. But when we go to the hospital, there's no lights, there's no sirens, if we don't need them. Uh, we administer the drugs occasionally, but, uh, not occasionally, but frequently. We also do certain things like IVs and, uh, uh, EKGs and all this stuff, which require us to move around the ambulance. Because of the fact that it's unsafe, because of the fact of the situation that happened with the champlain EMS, there are two people in the back not belted in. They were, whether or not they were actually performing a, uh, an intervention at that particular time, I don't know, but they weren't belted in. One of them went all the way from the jump seat through the, uh, passageway into the front and into the windshield.
Wow, yeah.
The other one went all the way from the side bench in the back, all the way to at least to the bulkhead, if not also up into the, uh, front compartment as well. This is what happens when you're not belted in, and I, and honestly, I'll tell you, if I frequently am not belted in, I'm probably belted, uh, belted in five percent of the time when I'm on the way to hospital. Hundred percent of the time on the way back, five percent on the way. What you're going to see, and, and, and the real reason I'm mentioning this, you're going to see us spend longer in your driveway, maybe even longer in your house. You're gonna see us starting your IVs before we leave the house or before we leave your driveway. You're gonna see us taking the EKGs before we leave the driveway. So, please, don't get upset with the fact that I'm doing this. Before, before instance now, if we get, if we get a response to a person who is no, not breathing, not, doesn't have pulse, whether in cardiac arrest, you're gonna see us working on scene. You're not gonna see us go to the hospital with that patient.
And that's what the department tells you?
Yeah. Either, one of two things are gonna happen. Either you're gonna bring, give a spontaneous returns of, uh, circulation and, uh, that respiratory patients, release circulation, in which case we will then go to the hospital or we will pronounce the person on the scene. We have every drug they have in the emergency room. They don't work with us, they're not gonna work down there. And it's absolutely unsafe beyond belief to be doing the interventions that we do for a cardiac arrest while the ambulance is moving down the road.
Keep delays on Facebook, you'll be fine. Yeah? Do they make, I'm realized, um, do they make a, like an attached harness like the Air Force has? You can walk around, it's attached?
They do.
They don't know.
Yeah. I'll tell you this right now, you put about a six-foot feather on that. You wanna bounce around and the ambulance is going.
Oh, no.
From my personal point of view, they're useless.
Okay.
Yeah. It just means if you bounce sixty foot out of that wall, sixty foot out of that wall, you don't go, you're gonna reach out. Big deal.
Yeah. This kind of close quarters or something like that, anyway. Yeah.
So what's a family feeling on this, uh?
Yeah, okay.
You're gonna say, hey, I personally make it.
More anything?
You're trying to do everything, kids, if you never made it to the hospital.
Can you be just the MP or anything?
Well, just because the, uh, mayor is asking, an advanced EMT is like what I am, correct?
An advanced EMT is, for instance, administer an IV and use more complex drugs. Increasingly, Department of Health protocols say that if it's this, then start an IV, EMD
drugs. I can't do that. So, happy as I am to go to some call, there's a lot of them I am not sufficiently trained. I will not volunteer to take that training. I know I can't do it. I, I...
Oh, I guess we're the toy.
I, I just know that. I take all the training and frankly, I'll pass all the tests, and then today I have to take a needle and shove it into Ben in here. It's not gonna work. I don't know what's gonna happen. Me, by the way, I'm...
I thought, no, I, 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 I just love the fact I'm a needle.
I don't like, I never liked needles.
Me, I don't, you know, if the person's bleeding, I pass out, if it's mixed in the stomach, I get upset. When they get having a pain, I start crying, so being an advanced EMT is not easy.
I'm sure. Maybe we may to make a concern different to advertise, and maybe there's some local nurses, uh, that work down there, maybe will sign up on the day off, be a call.
Sure.
I was probably, I mean, they still have to qualify as the, and, and we had a couple of nurses that were interested until we found out that they still had to go ahead and qualify as advanced life support, and just, well, we put them in that.
I admire you guys for what you do. I've been, I'm absolutely no good at it. I ain't no good.
That's why I'm not lying to you either.
I have to get myself a shot every night, so I don't want you to talk.
The bottom line is, right now, ambulance service regardless of the level, doesn't cost taxpayers anything more than the cost of the ambulance in, in our training. If something happens and we can't provide that, it's gonna cost us some money.
Oh, definitely. Definitely. You have to, we'll pay department or whatever, or whatever you wanna call it, that's, that's gonna be a big...
And even if the law's changed, so that we can charge, it's not going to cover.
Yeah.
Not, not traditional.
These are small stuff that we, uh, can be a little bit...
Well, see it all the horizon.
Yeah. Well, that's gonna be a priority. Obviously, we have a large demographic, and we have to have, which we do, we're gonna keep that priority listed.
I probably did something wrong, but in my mind, I did it right. I don't care who knows it. And I signed a paper, George Walker, from Lighthouse Marina, who has spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this village, buying that place. I had, I signed that letter so he could get action taken, to get the things processed through. And for anybody that has spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, whether you like the man or don't like the man, and if it's going to be anywhere used, I'd do the same thing again. Some people say I'm, I got my ass through, excuse my language, but I got you good. but I got you good. Gosh, Thursday.
Would you like to let it to Adam?
Can I?
George, that's my.
George Walker, Lighthouse Marina. Um, we're in the unfortunate position we purchased in March of 2010. And then five weeks later, we had that storm that basically wiped out the Marina. So we've been looking to reconfigure and picking up our permits. Um, it's been a slow process. Because we own the underlying railroad bed, the Office of Government Services would normally, um, do the environmental report, but because, um, we own it, um, they were not prepared to go ahead and do the environmental report. We came in to see the trustees last October and asked for the zoning board or the planning board to be the lead agency for the environmental review. Um, a short while afterwards, the board of trustees appointed the planning board to be the lead agency for SECR, the state environmental forum review act, as well as planning site review, um, as well as a special permit. Unfortunately, I think our appointed officials were led down the road by the professionals, um, because it isn't what they're doing. I'll be blunt. Um, they hadn't heard the code book. Um, the code book was revised in 2011, um, worth applying in April 2005, I believe, uh, 2012. And, uh, the attorney is still reading the code book in 2004, um, when he was questioned twice. Um, he was very, uh, kind of standing. Um, the code enforcement officer said that he wasn't aware that the code book had changed. Um, special permit process probably cost us $25,000. Probably lost four months. And, uh, I came in to see the mayor and I thought, I'm in trouble, because I think we're being treated differently than, uh, Lighthouse Marina. And, uh, I asked him to investigate. And he did that. He reported back. And there were three instances that, uh, he reported on. I then went to see our attorneys to see if we could jumpstart this process. And the mayor swore two, three truthful facts that he knew the truth. He looked into it, and that was the result of the affidavit. The affidavit was requiring the planning board to finally hear our case. Two cases. One is the environmental review, one is planning site review. And the special permit that they had been putting us through, the judge sent them out. It was illegal business. Five months, too late. And, uh, so I don't look at the mayor and chew him out. I take a look at somebody who was looking at that, trying to bring back 320 votes this summer. I look at somebody who's trying to look at 30 equivalent jobs. Um, when I went down to speak with him, he said, uh, put it in writing. So I put it in writing, he investigated, he reported back, and he told the truth. So for somebody that has a problem with that, with that process, more than willing to stay here all evening. But I think that he'd be commended, because a lot of people sit on their hands. And I've asked other trustees, um, what I should do, and the reaction was, you need to do some of that. It's never easy. Uh, I myself, uh, was on the planning board for 14 years. Um, colleagues selected me to be chair for 13. Um, I was an assessor for three years. I always liked to be in a small town and have to write my decisions with the neighbor. And it's not always liked. You've got to do the right thing regardless of the popularity on the public front. And, uh, I think that's what the mayor did. Um, as far as state statutes, I have them all here. He hasn't violated anything. And, uh, I really want to talk about town council, because I think that as a taxpayer, um, we have not been well served. We'd expect that person to be up on the laws and respond to say that they're reading five, uh, five month old codes on, just doesn't swing. Uh, I can't tell you how much money has been spent foolishly, but I've been a vet. Uh, there's a large block, maybe $2,500, Cooper's here, I don't know how they allocate money, but, uh, the town council is going to waste. And, uh, that's what I have to say. And I would love to, uh, to have a committee together to, uh, talk about replacing town council with somebody who's competent, qualified, and, uh, is, uh, not relying on anyone else to do it on.
So what's along the, where do you stand with all of that? You lift that in the water, you're done, you're finished?
No, 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 no. We have a hearing on Monday on the fire panel, the water report, and then the site line review will continue. So the Judge Ryan, um, is overseeing the process. He's, uh, he was, he was quite surprised to see that the mayor had written a letter and, uh, had stated the facts as they were. And, uh, once he saw that, he realized that action needed to be taken. And, uh, the meetings have been waiting for were immediately suspended. So I'm pleased with the results, and, uh, I think that the mayor's been commended for taking position. Someone who, uh, wants to chew on him, and there's a town justice or someone else. I, amongst other things, probably no other person in this world. And it's painful when you're sitting as a, as an applicant, and you see a misapplication of laws, and you see someone who's very callous and, uh, doesn't at all identify the failure of the project. And that's what I found. And it's two years down there, it's enough. So you never like to sue the town, but that's what we had to do. And the lawsuit involved forcing the planning board to finally hear our case. It was based on four activated, two mayors. For any questions, I'll be glad. We take them there. In this case, I think it showed leadership as opposed to doing nothing. And certainly helped us along.
Like I say, if there was anybody in this room that had that kind of money tied up, I'd do it. It's an honor. Right now, anybody wants me to step down, I'd join the crowd and put it on my desk. That's all I got.
No one should be punished for honesty.
Uh?
No one should be punished for honesty.
Tell them the truth. Oh, you and I getting out.
Anybody else? Sorry, I'm over here. Um, gentleman, I don't know who. Um, attorney. Say, Owen, if you're reading out of the 2004 code book, um, it's tough to get there. What else?
A lot of them sell.
Man, I think these volunteer boards are lying. And that's why you should get the weapon, it's blocking that. Step back and review. So when I hear about soaring costs, I can pull up an affidavit that we were, um, we were permitted to fly in the DBC, we were permitted to fly to the Army Corps of Engineers, um, and there was a, uh, affidavit. And, uh, the attorney wanted to make up his own. The piece of paper that came back, um, talked about three different things, the cut and paste that had been done, looked like it had been done by the current legal, but didn't understand. First line, Captain being the sole owner. And this way through, they talked about multiple owners. And by the time they got to the end, they had another corporation. So I don't know what you billed for that piece of paper, but it was sort of like grammar school, third grade, crossing out. And, uh, it's upsetting because we're all paying for that.
How much is the village going to be paying for the lawsuit? What are you looking on getting out of the lawsuit?
I want action.
Action. Just to get it done, get the permits done?
And frankly, it'd be true to the same as everyone else. I mean, if you take a look at what we've done, I think, uh, even Joe would say that it's been a different review. Um, we had sent down screwdrivers with the telemetry. We had a licensed engineer who submitted a, I don't know, 70-page report for body profiles. Um, we've had that, another person hired, um, to review it. And then they wanted an oceanologist. And so we're here on the way. I think I've to find an oceanologist, give her the seacoast. But we found one, and that wasn't set. So we're reviewing that again. Um, but I'd like to think that everybody was in the same process. It's not a. Are you saying that better than I can? You did your addition. I don't think you had to go through that.
Well, we didn't go through it much as you do, but it took us two and a half years. And same thing, I've been at some of the meetings that you've been to that I haven't said anything to. Um, but, you know, when they ask you for a certain paperwork, and that's what my wife says, like, you are not doing any more progress because of the permit process. So I don't know all of what you've gone through. I know part of what you've gone through, because I sat in on some of the meetings, the private meetings that I do go through. Um, but yeah, it takes, I want to say the village, I was the point, they're not granting us a permit until we have, I'm in for the C and OGS in hand. They won't even begin to issue us a permit. But I don't know if that's how they're treating you or not, but that's how the, how public groups came down. I had all permits in hand and coffee inside, and so there is from all of them, in order for that to happen. But if that's what's happening with you or not, I don't know your process. So, but we were two and a half years getting that permit for, uh, for our red quarter. Um, probably, you know, I remember myself, but probably pulled $100,000 in process and public fees and, and Sarah Davis and everything else before we even started from the rock and the way it got through the, with the process. So it is a big project you're looking to do. We have a big project, takes a lot of money, a lot of time.
They can do it. We know it's a new project, nurses. Correct. So we're putting somebody back.
Well, yes, and you're replacing. I was making a deal.
Have you received permits from the other agencies?
Not until we get secret.
We were required to do secret through DBC and other agencies.
All, all three agencies.
And we had to present that to the village. So the village would not give you, give us our permit until we see the permit.
The difference here is that the village is doing secret.
Because you requested it.
No, because nobody else would do it. DBC asked the village to do it. Army Corps says, we're the Fed, we're not playing state games. And OGS says, you own it, so we don't get to do it.
So then you would be required to do more than we would be because somebody else did secret. The village did not do secret for us.
Do you think it's the same program?
Well, we were put through a lot through DBC because they were doing secret. So that's my comment. If it is like the, um, sensitive process, well, because of secret being done by the village. But if you have not received your permit from the others as well, then are you suing them as well?
No, you can't. And so we have a secret permit, I think, for the first time. And you used to, we're buying the DBC, we're buying all these DBCs. So until that's started, we're, we're stopping.
And you have provided them with everything you requested.
And more. Well, that permit is very, very darned. And it's very subjective, um, standards. So the board's going to ask for an awful lot. We went through that process. We're not going to expose it. And, uh, we weren't getting any more. That's what's up. Mr. Petro's here, you can comment on why the five-month delay in the vote, which I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address the board this issue, if I may. I'm Mike Petro. I'm the outgoing poll officer, because apparently I don't do my job. Mr. Walker has everybody's ear in this room. There's the planning board, Chairman, Mr. Cooper is here, Mrs. Hall is here, there may be a couple other planning board members here. I would invite everybody in this room to come to the next planning board hearing, which is going to be December 10th, for Mr. Walker's application, and listen to what the board is requesting of Mr. Walker, and the interaction of the board, and then inform your own opinions. He's getting a very, very slanted view here of what he's telling you people.
Is he trying to make you this?
I'm not answering any questions for you.
Yes or no?
No, I'm not going to answer anything for you.
Actually, we're going to stop for the comment on this anyway, because it shouldn't be pursued at this venue in particular, so the planning board.
That's all I'm asking. Get to the planning board, me, and inform your own opinions on what's going on.
Anything else on any other topics?
Ben Arnold, 104 St. Street. I walk around the railroad station. I go over there often and stuff, and the meter box under a building, it, it looks pretty bad. If the village board had anything to say about it, I think you ought to look at it. And, I mean, there's three couples within 18 inches of the, in the bike and stuff like that, which is unbelievable unsightly. I mean, it's terrible. So for a historical building, it doesn't look very good. And it's also crooked besides that. And that's Mr. Jabut that's doing that job, which I think is terrible.
Open meeting, which is what we're doing now. People, like, wish they'd sign.
Make a motion, go to recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thank you all.